Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the August 26th Richland School District II School Board of Trustees Meeting. We just concluded our executive session, and I certainly want to welcome everyone to our open session this evening. Thank you for being here with us tonight as we begin a new school year and first board meeting of a new school year. And so, I want to welcome all of our teachers and parents and students back who are here tonight, as well as those who are watching or will be watching on R2 TV. So, at this time, the chair, we will stand and have an inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance. Inspirational reading tonight is a reading that's entitled "A Creed to Live By." It says, "Don't undermine your worth by comparing yourself with others. It is because we are different that each of us is special. Don't set your goals by what other people deem important. Only you know what is best for you. Don't take for granted the things closest to your heart. Cling to them as you would your life, for without them, life is meaningless. Don't let your life slip through your fingers by living in the past or for the future. By living your life one day at a time, you live the whole days of your life. Don't give up when you still have something to give. Nothing is really over until the moment you stop trying. Don't be afraid to admit that you are less than perfect. It is this fragile thread that binds us to each other. Don't be afraid to encounter risk. It is by taking chances that we learn how to be brave. Don't shut out love out of your life by saying it's impossible to find. The quickest way to receive love is to give love. The fastest way to lose love is to hold it too tightly. And the best way to keep love is to give it wings. Don't dismiss your dreams. To be without dreams is to be without hope. To be without hope is to be without purpose. Don't run through life so fast that you forget not only where you have been, but also where you're going. Life is not a race, but a journey to be savored every step of the way." Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. May be seated. Next on the agenda is the approval of the current agenda.
What's the move?
The approval by Ms. Anderson.
Second.
Second by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Dr. Fleming is not coming up, she's voting yes. The motion passes six to zero. At this time, I'd like to mention that one of our board members, Mrs. Barbara Spector, is not able to be with us tonight. She's out recuperating from some minor surgery, so Inspector, I'm sure that you're watching. I want to wish you the very best. Next on our agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Anderson.
I move that we approve the consent agenda, but I had a couple of questions on ratification of personnel.
Okay, we'll get that.
But I will go ahead and move that we approve it. And if there are questions, I can talk with Mr. Garrett later and at the next board meeting if I need to make any changes.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. It's been motioned by Ms. Anderson for approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
A second, but we have an addendum, don't we?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Approval of the consent agenda with the addendum.
Two amendments.
Yes. Approval of the consent agenda with the addendum. We move by Ms. Anderson, second by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six to zero. Next on our agenda is special recognitions. Ms. Ruth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, Dr. Hamm and staff. We have two national award winners to recognize tonight, a student and a staff member. First, we'll call up Sam Todd. Sam is a middle school student at Dent Middle, but the award we're recognizing him for tonight was one he won as a fifth grader at Forest Lake Elementary. His elementary principal, Dr. Cappy Steck, and teacher Denise Duke are here also, and they'll come up with Sam. Sam is the National ACE, which stands for Aerospace, Connects, and Education Student of the Year. He was selected by the Civil Air Patrol based on his high achievements in science and school leadership. In his nomination, Ms. Duke wrote that Sam loves science and puts 100% in every activity that he does. He was also one of three students chosen by Forest Lake to meet NASA's head administrator, Charles Bolden, earlier this year. I am sure Sam felt right at home at Forest Lake Elementary, which is a NASA Explorer School, recognized many times over for outstanding achievements in aerospace education. And as you can see, Sam brought his national award with him as well. Congratulations, Sam. And now, I'm calling forward a familiar face at board meetings and in our district office, Jill Avery-Hart. Jill won the Best State Website Award at the Annual Meeting of the National Association of Educational Office Professionals in Portland, Oregon. We always knew how talented Jill was as an executive assistant for our assistant superintendents, and now she is standing out as a superstar in the Educational Office Professionals Association. On the local, state, and national level, she is leaving her mark as a wonderful cheerleader, ambassador, and leader for education office professionals. To finish up special recognitions, Superintendent Debbie Hamm and Richland II's lead social worker, Abby Cobb, are going to join Mr. Jackson for a special presentation from SEDEXO representatives. They are Deb McLaughlin, Jane K., Michael Bell, Ashawn Lowe, Amanda Bailey, and Larry Shepherd. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McLaughlin.
First, we want to thank you for our partnership. And on behalf of SEDEXO, we are honored to present to you this check for $30,000 to assist with the local backpack program.
Whoa! And we just wanted to thank SEDEXO for their partnership and their willingness to help our students and families in needs. We're really excited about this money. We figured out an average backpack for our students costs anywhere between $5 to $7 a week, and so, we're looking at anywhere from 100 to 125 kids a week that this money is going to go help. So, we just want to express our extreme gratitude for your partnership.
Thank you very much for that tremendous donation by SEDEXO that's going to go a very long way towards helping a lot of students that need that help and appreciate that help on a weekly basis. Next on our agenda is our student focus. Dr. Hamm?
Yes, I'm happy to introduce Mr. Shawn Bishden, principal here, who is going to introduce his students. I think they have a showcase performance for us.
Good evening, Richland II board members, Dr. Hamm, executive staff, Richland II faculty, staff, students, and parents. Welcome to Rice Creek Elementary School. For our student focus tonight, we'll be sharing our new school song and our Seven Habits Character Education Initiative and its impact on our students. The Seven Habits Initiative is a school-wide framework which was derived from Stephen Covey's Leader in Me Program. Through our initiative, we're empowering our stakeholders to lead from where they are, no matter who is watching. At this time, if you'd like to turn around, I'd like to introduce you to our student leaders for our student focus. Thank you.
My name is Dallas Radcliffe, and I am a fifth grade student here at Rice Creek Elementary. Our music teacher, Ms. Runfeld, and Mr. Nelson, the child development teacher, have written a song to go along with our school-wide education initiative tied to the seven habits that we use in our school every day. This song will be taught to all students here at Rice Creek, and it will become our school song. At this time, I would like to present Ms. Runfeld, the related arts teacher, and some other students, other students of Rice Creek Elementary, as they share this song with you.
Always do our best and reaching for the stars. Learn and work together, respecting others too. We are Rice Creek Dolphins, and that is what we do. We are Rice Creek Dolphins, we lead from where we are. Always do our best and reaching for the stars. Learn and work together, respecting others too. We are Rice Creek Dolphins, and that is what we do.
My name is Ira DeKeewog. I am a fifth grade student from Rice Creek Elementary. I have been a Rice Creek Dolphin since kindergarten. We use the seven habits of effective people in all that we do in Rice Creek. Do you know why we use the seven habits? I will explain to you why the seven habits are so important to us here. The seven habits allows all students to take responsibility in their actions, and the seven habits also recognizes the leader in each one of us. That means we are all leaders of Rice Creek, and that is very important. Thank you for visiting our school this evening.
Habit one, be proactive. I'm in charge of me. I choose my actions, moods, and attitudes. I don't blame other people for my choices, and I do the right thing without being asked.
Habit two, begin with the end in mind. I have a plan. I set goals and plan ahead to achieve them. I look for ways to be a good citizen to my school and community. That's habit two, begin with the end in mind.
Habit three, put first things first. I work first, then play. I spend time on things that are most important. I make and follow a plan. I am organized. Habit three, put first things first.
Habit four, think, win, win. Everybody can win. I don't put others down to get what I want. I do nice things to other people. When a problem happens, I think of a way to solve it. That's habit four, think, win, win.
Habit five, seek first to understand, then to be understood. I listen before you talk. I listen to other people's ideas and feelings. I listen without interrupting and value other people's opinions. That's habit five, seek first to understand, then to be understood.
Habit six, synergize. Together is better. I get along with other people even if they are different than me. I work well in groups and know that two heads are better than one. Habit six, synergize.
Habit seven, sharpen the saw, balance is best. I take care of my mind, body, and soul. I spend time with my family and friends and lights are new things. Habit seven, sharpen the saw.
Let's review.
Habit one, be proactive. Habit two, begin with the end in mind. Habit three, put first things first. Habit four, think, win, win. Habit five, seek first to understand, then to be understood. Habit six, synergize. Habit seven, sharpen the saw.
The seven habits of effective people have affected everybody in the school. They've encouraged us to take responsibility for our actions. My favorite, um, my favorite seven habit is synergize, because I work better in a big group, and I think that everybody should be, should help somebody, and they should help, and in return, they should, and they should help them. They don't know what they mean. They don't understand it.
I think the seven habits have impacted my life because it made me more organized and more accountable, and my favorite seven habit is think, win, win, because if I win, then somebody else win. We both win. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Rice Creek Dolphins. A great job, and certainly reminding us of some very fundamental traits that will help us all to be good citizens and great neighbors in this, in this world. So, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the public participation session. No one has signed up, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come and address the board, you can do so at this time. Okay, no one is, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the, we'll be voting on the executive session items. The chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, appeal number one, recommend, deny the appeal, and the student attend Blithwood Academy and Laredoak. Second.
The motion by Ms. Anderson, I mean, Ms. Brill, and second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the addendum items.
Mr. Chair, student number one, recommend that the student attend Anna Boyd Alternative School. Second.
Removed by Ms. Brill and second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six to zero. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the second addendum item.
Student number two, uphold the appeal and recommend that the student attend adult ed. Second.
Removed by Ms. Brill, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the addendum items.
Mr. Chair, student number one, recommend that the student attend Anna Boyd Alternative School. Second.
Removed by Ms. Brill and second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Chair will entertain a motion on the second addendum item.
Student number two, uphold the appeal and recommend that the student attend adult ed. Second.
Removed by Ms. Brill, second by Ms. Anderson. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is under new business action requested, the approval of the Richland II Charter High School request for permanent change in charter agreement.
Mr. Chair, I move that we.
Anderson.
We approve the permanent change for ninth to 10th graders to attend Richland II Charter School. Second.
Removed by Ms. Anderson and second by Mr. Manning. Is any further discussion?
I have a few questions.
Dr. Elkes Johnson?
Yes. Mr. Levitt, can you go to the mic for me, please?
Good evening, sir.
I know you're asking that we would approve adding more ninth graders to the charter school. If you can give us an update on how did ninth gradeers perform last school year?
I'll be glad to. Number one, while I'm looking for this, we had no disgruntled parents, no infractions of any rules, no problems at all for any ninth graders. As far as ninth graders go, we had, and one of the concerns, I think, was the age of ninth graders that we were starting off with. We had only two true ninth graders. We had a 17-year-old, a 16-year-old, another 16, a 14, a 18, a 14, a 17, 14, 16, 15, 16. So, these are students that have had some issues in the regular school that came to us mainly by recommendation. Out of these, we had one student that came with three and a half credits, and they came in February and finished three classes with us. We had another student that came, a 16-year-old, that came with seven and a half credits, came in November, they completed five and a half credits. We had some that were not successful, one that left to go to adult ed, one that moved to Kershaw County, another one went to adult ed. We had a runaway from the area that dropped out. We only had to drop one student for lack of participation out of all of us. Very successful, and very happy parents, and still getting very strong recommendations this year from guidance and district staff.
One other question. I know the last meeting you gave us an example of the survey, and I think out of that survey, if you can just share with us again, how many you sent out to parents and how many were returned?
Sent one to every parent. I don't have those figures right in front of me. Like, it was 30-something returned. Trip register, I mean, trip, I forget my board member name, who had worked in Baptist Hospital, staff, executive, vice president, and he said we had a very strong return for that type of survey. We sent self-addressed stamped envelopes and everything.
Right, but I want to be clear. I think you said before you sent out maybe 80-something and only 15 returned?
A higher number than that. It was 30-something percent that was returned.
30-something percent that were returned? Okay.
Other questions? Dr. Manning?
Just a comment. As the liaison to the board for the charter school, their board unanimously supports this, wholeheartedly supports the continuation and the permanent addition of ninth and 10th grade for the school. They've seen the success. I know they've kept a close eye on the students' performance, other issues, and they are 100% behind this ask for us to make this permanent.
Other questions or comments from the board?
Just another comment.
Dr. Elkes Johnson?
Yes, I'm 100% also, but let's just make it clear. I don't think all of the board members have visited the charter school, so I'm going to challenge all of the board members to be active, be proactive, and go and visit before we make too many comments.
I'd also like to ask that if you get a chance to talk to some parents and students there, they're most appreciative of this opportunity, and I think a lot of the district staff is seeing a lot of opportunities to help students with this.
Thank you.
Mr. Jackson, I just want to make it clear, Dr. Elkes, that I have visited the school as the liaison, I visit the board meetings, and as the, at the time, the board chair for the committee that helped to create the charter school. So, I spend a lot of time with the school, continually stay in communication with folks on the board, and visit the school regularly.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. And I have the privilege of serving as the board's liaison to the charter school before Mr. Manning. Mr. Manning and, uh, had the opportunity to do the same thing. So, uh, have certainly done it as well. Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, it's been moved and second. And any further discussion? If no further discussion, we're ready to vote. Motion passes six zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your support. I'd like to also at this time recognize our chairman of our Richland Two Charter Board, Martin Walden. Came over tonight. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is under new business new action requested, update on our fundraiser, competitive food sales. Dr. Hamm?
Recent federal regulations regarding healthy foods and nutrition in our schools have affected our ability to have certain kinds of fundraisers and competitive food sales. And Mr. Carter is here to tell you about those requirements and how it's impacted us.
Well, the, uh, Hunger, Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten established certain goals for, uh, foods that our kids were fed in schools and that they were exposed to in schools. Uh, they have been implementing, phasing in of that law over the last four years. It went into full implementation on the first of July of this year. Uh, it affects all foods and beverages sold, uh, outside of the federal child nutrition program, things like school stores, vending machines, and fundraisers. And so, anything that's sold to a child during the school day. It defines the school day, and I'm not sure how they got here, but it's from midnight to thirty minutes after the end of the school day. So, you really have from, you know, high school from three-thirty to eleven-fifty-nine that you can do other things and it's be perfectly acceptable. Uh, fundraisers can be exempt if they meet the standard, but it's very difficult to meet the standard. And I'll show you in a minute why it's difficult to meet that standard. And anything that's sold after the school or off campus doesn't have to meet the standard. And I'm not going to go through this entire chart, but if you just look at the sodium, those are very low numbers for sodium. And just as an example, a Chick-fil-A biscuit, one Chick-fil-A biscuit has over twelve hundred grams, milligrams of sodium. So, it, it is very difficult for the things that our kids used to like, that they could, we could sell them and, and schools could make money off of, donuts, all those things. Just if you can't make it in calories, you almost surely won't make it in sodium. Um, and, and to figure out all the rest of this, you actually have to look at the package and figure out percentages of, of the weight and, and that sort of stuff. So, I just basically concentrate on two areas when I look at items. I look at the calorie content and the sodium content. And I will tell you that the law will continue to reduce the sodium content until it's basically zero in all food service program operations. I also looked at a Domino's pizza. And when you go to a Domino's pizza site, you actually have to build a pizza. And as I built just a simple, thin crust pepperoni pizza, I got up around nineteen hundred milligrams of sodium. So, it, again, very difficult. Now, I know that a number of, of vendors, Chick-fil-A, um, uh, Domino's, and Subway, and others are working to develop products that could be sold to students that wouldn't meet the standards. But, again, it's a moving target. So, what's, what would be acceptable this year will probably not be acceptable next year. Another major component of the, the law is a minimum and maximum calorie allowance. So, if you look, this shows you the minimum and maximum calorie allowance for elementary kid, and then a middle school child and a high school child. I think the key point here is if you are a ninth-grade, hundred-pound cheerleader, your calorie count would be the same as a six-three, three-hundred-pound defensive tackle that's a senior. I'm not sure that passes the common sense test, but that's what's in the law. And then finally, we, we, we get, as you can imagine, principals are asking lots of questions. I'll be honest with you, we're taking a bit of a hard line at the beginning. It's a lot easier for us to go back and say, we've researched that to the point we can now allow it than it is to let them start and then have to tell them to stop. So, we sent a, a, a good number of answers to questions they've asked. Couple of points here, uh, donuts for dads, muffins for moms are very popular programs. What we are telling them is establish your breakfast period, especially at elementary where those are done. And after your breakfast period's over, then do your donuts for dads, muffins for moms, just make sure that they are donated and it'll be just fine. Another aspect is a parent could bring, a parent can send anything they want to home for their, into school for their child and their lunchbox. They could also go and bring a Happy Meal, and we, we do know that happens. What they can't do is bring lunch for their child and all of their child's friends. That would be outside of the interpretation of the law. Athletic events are fine. Right now, we're saying no sales to parents in the car rider line because it's where you sell. If you sell while the child's still in the car, I guarantee you the child's going to be eating the chicken biscuit. And so, until we get further clarification, we recommend that we not do that at all. Uh, club meetings at lunch, they have to meet the standard. The odd part is I can sell you all the cookie dough you can eat, but I can't sell you a cookie. But, because it's a prepared food. The state had the option at the beginning of this process to request exemptions. Uh, we got a letter back in the spring that said the state was not going to request any exemptions and we would follow the letter of the law. They have subsequently rethought that. Uh, the State Department of Education is in fact going to the state school board to ask them to approve some exceptions, which will then go to USDA for approval from USDA, which I'm sure they will do. I just do not know the magnitude of what they're going to do as far as numbers. I know, I've heard in Georgia, there are some schools are asking for sixty exemptions a year. So, with that, I, I am far from an expert. I've read the law front to back several times. I can just tell you, it keeps leading you around to different places and it's pretty confusing.
Thank you, Jack. Questions or comments on the board?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning?
Few questions. Uh, number one, what happens if we violate the law?
That's a very good question. We could conceivably lose, we could conceivably lose all of our federal reimbursement. And that's only seven point two million dollars for Richland Two. That would shut down our food service program. Now, the, the USDA and the state have said there will be checks. I'm not currently willing to risk seven point two million dollars. Again, we're going to continue to try to work with schools to work out these issues. I know fundraisers are a big deal. And, you know, I've had a couple of schools figure out if I just do it thirty minutes after school, I can do it and we're good to go, so.
What about things like a student has a birthday, parent brings in, you know, cake or whatever, is that?
If it's donated, what we're saying right now, if it's donated and outside of breakfast and lunch, it's fine. There's no restriction. We've gotten two or three different interpretations of whether that's allowable during lunch or not, uh, until I get something really definitive. And if you read the law, it's not real clear what the law says. I mean, it says in one place it's competitive and another place it says it's allowable. And it's, it's a long, convoluted law.
Are we as a district looking at some alternatives for fundraisers? I know South Carolina Future Minds has really been pushing their donate button, getting away from the two to three percent that we sometimes make off of some of these fundraisers. Instead, um, gain the whole amount that's donated to the schools.
I know the principals are. I know, uh, Mr. Price and Mr. Davis have both made some sort of broad recommendations of things they might want to think about. Dr. Hamm has thrown some things out there that they might want to think about. So, yes, we are looking at alternatives.
Mrs. Anderson?
So, Jack, I, when I read, very disturbed, and I had a parent, uh, to question me on it, um, the donuts for mom and dads, so as long as it's not during breakfast hour. So, the children have breakfast when they first go to school, right?
Yes, ma'am, but it's, an elementary school, for instance, could say, okay, my breakfast is from seven-thirty to seven-forty-five. And the, the regular kids, either kids that go, uh, where we have breakfast in the classroom, basically they eat all that in the classroom. The other schools, they could establish a reasonable breakfast period and then start that program at the end of that reasonable breakfast period. Now, I don't want them to say my breakfast period is from seven-thirty to seven-thirty-five. That, that's not reasonable. But if it's enough to get the kids that normally would go through the cafeteria and eat, then they, they're free to do it.
So, it wouldn't be altering the class schedule?
It could. Um, I think most of them, and I, I know we have some elementary principals here, I think their last bell is around eight-oh-five or eight-ten, somewhere in there. So, there, there is a, a time period where they can do it. It's not the full thirty minutes or so that they've been used to doing, but at least they can still do it. And, um, there is a compliant, uh, muffin that Sedexo can make, or our food service partner can make, that they can use and then they don't have any restrictions. They tell me to have a donut. I, I kind of wonder about a donut that's compliant. And, uh, I will tell you that Ralph Schmidt had a, a pop tart out of the, one of his vending machines, which was compliant. He said it was a little akin to eating paper.
Other questions or comments from the board? Dr. Fleming?
Does this affect our culinary classes in the house?
It's, if it, we treat it as part of the instructional program. It's, it's exempt. We're doing the same thing for our, um, special needs kids have special dietary requirements. We're not, we're not even attempting to enforce that. We have, I know one child who's, who's blind and everything for him is texture. So, if he doesn't like the texture, he's not going to eat it. So, you know, I'll let him come after me on special needs kids.
Yes, sir. Dr. Fleming?
My next chair question is, the state by not, by not requesting an exception implicitly means they have to abide by the law, the federal law?
Yes, sir.
Now, did the state legislature agree to this or, I'm just, some of these things confuse me, these laws, these federal mandates, this is a federal mandate. So, I mean, without state action, I mean, I just want the constitution out of doing this. I really do. Uh, seven hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty calories for a high school student? I mean, this is, this not even makes sense. I mean, so, if the states, like you said, they, I guess if they didn't request an exception, they-
Thirty-nine states-
They apply, but I, I just don't understa, I guess I just don't understand how they can, they can require you to do something when it's not included in their, they don't fund it, it's not included in their breakfast or their lunch programs. It's just something that the schools do. I just don't, I, I just don't really understand the, the law and legality of that. But that's okay. I'm sure you don't either, but, uh-
I think it's a well-intended law. I'm just not sure it doesn't need to be cleaned up someplace.
Thank you.
Thirty-nine states did in fact, I'm sorry, Mrs. Jackson, thirty-nine states did request prior to the first of July for exemptions and had them approved.
Mrs. Brill?
Um, how does this affect vending machines and soft drink machines? Do we don't have those anymore?
Oh, we still have them.
So, what goes in them?
Everything in the machine has to meet the standard.
Is that we're doing that or we will be doing that?
We, we actually had very healthy drinks and snack machines that we, we started five or six years ago. And when Sedexo became our partner, you know, they've worked with us and they've been complying on their program the entire time. I've talked to Lexington Three, Lexington One, Lexington Five. They're all essentially doing the same thing. We're, Lexington Five is outlawed all celebrations and all vending machines. Uh, Lexington Three doesn't allow anything during lunch periods, uh, which is what we're recommending right now. But it, there is an impact to all food service programs because to find foods that are compliant, the cost of those foods is astronomical compared to what we would have saved, said we would have bought, say, five years ago.
Question. And I wanted to add another comment.
Yes, Mrs. Brill, go ahead.
That I'm one hundred percent that this is the way to go. And you can cut down on your sodium, increase your, uh, likelihood of living longer and not know it. I think the sodium that they add to our, our food is, um, unnecessary, way too much.
Mrs. Anderson?
Now, you're saying that during lunchtime, the kids cannot use the vending machines?
We're recommending that right now. I'm trying to get further clarification because there are two components of the law. One is competing with the federally funded school lunch program. So, if they're buying stuff out of the vending machine, they're technically competing with the, the school lunch program. We make it back, go back. We've asked them right now at the high school level to cut them off at lunch and they cut them back on after. I've been talking to at least one of the vendors on several occasions and, and we're emailing back and forth and trading our interpretations of the law. And if, if we can get, frankly, if we could get one authoritative person to say, this is the answer and put it in writing, then, then we'll have a better field. But I've asked the same question of three different people, got three different opinions. And I'm a little leery of not taking a hard stand until we get it really sorted out.
And I don't think you're going to find anybody to make that stand because what you're taking, what they're doing will be taking students' rights away from them. If they don't purchase it from the vending machines, the parents will send it to school. So, there's not a win-win situation in that. And I'm strongly against, um, stopping children from using the vending machines because they don't want to eat what's served in the cafeteria. So, I just, I just want to force my opinion. I think children have a right if they don't want what's served. And it may not be every day that they don't want what's served in the cafeteria. But those days that they don't, may not like that, I think that they should have the opportunity to purchase something from the vending machine so that they don't go all day long hungry. And by the time they get home from school, they're starving to death. And I've heard that from so many parents.
I will tell you, the law has had exactly the opposite effect of its intent. Fewer kids are eating in the cafeteria.
So, if we don't get anyone to give us a sound decision, where will we go from there?
I'll get with Dr. Hamm and we'll take it, we'll make a district decision.
Can you make it a board decision?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'd like to echo what Ms. Anderson said too. And I think particularly at the high school level, I think the elementary and middle school kids, um, probably, would probably be more compliant simply because mobility, access to cash, and those kinds of things. But to, to prevent it at the high school level, I think is a tremendous, uh, burden on, on that population who tend to have more cash and have access and mobility and that sort of thing. And particularly when a, a, a senior, juniors in some cases, can leave campus and get it and bring, and bring it back, it's okay, but can't get it right down the hall, uh, whatever they want in the machine. So, I would echo that, Ms. Anderson. Other questions or comments on the board?
I just have one question.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
I was wondering, do you know how much money we will lose out if we unplug the machines, vending machines during lunchtime for the high schools?
Not off the top of my head. I can certainly ask the high schools what they get back from the vending. When I talked to the gentleman from snack time, he told me that, uh, the little bit of money I make off of vending machines is not as important as seven million dollars, but he wants whatever he can make out of our machine. But I'll, I'll ask that question and get that back to you.
Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
My final comment on this, um, within my heart, I feel that we will increase particularly our seniors leaving campus if we unplug those machines or turn them on, which can increase accident rates. So, I really take this serious because if the child can go and get something out of the vending machine versus getting in a car, leaving campus, rushing back to be back to class on time, that's almost, we're, we're putting ourselves in jeopardy there. I don't like that at all. And I just want to make it publicly known that I do not want to cause a child to leave campus because he cannot, he or she cannot get something out of a vending machine at lunchtime. Opposed to that.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Other questions or comments on the board?
Jack, how are we communicating this, um, on a regular basis? I'm sure the first blitz was probably widespread and, uh, at group gatherings, but now that we've sort of gotten through that first wave, how are we ensuring that we continue to communicate this to, um, to schools and to, um, to our various schools?
I've emailed the principals frequently, sometimes in response to questions, but anytime I get some new piece of information or what I feel is a clarification, I send it to everybody. I include Mr. Price and, uh, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Manning?
To add on to that, you know, I think we need, um, maybe some sort of checklist or something that's very clear for folks that they, make sure that they look at it and clear that hurdle. Now, I think if, depending on how that's relayed, um, we just don't want to have any accidents, um, if we can avoid it.
And there really, really just two components that are, but I'd say real nebulous is not quite the right word. It's vending machines and the cupcakes and that sort of thing brought in at lunchtime. Those are the two areas that are least well-defined that I feel as we've read the law. So, we'll come to you with a recommendation.
I see lots of hurdles in there. Times that we do it, whether it's donated, whether it's not donated, does it meet certain caloric and, and other, um, so that's what I'm saying, some sort of guideline that's easy for, for our principals to just do a quick check before something happens to make sure that we don't have any mistakes. And then I, I know some schools are already working on a healthy initiative where they had, um, they weren't even accepting donuts for dads and muffins for moms. I don't know if they're still doing that in some of the schools.
That, right now, is basically a local decision by the principals.
Mrs. Brill?
Mrs. Brill?
I'm certain that we can find items to put in the vending machines. There is somebody out there just dying to do it. All you have to do is go to Trader Joe's and figure out what it is you want.
Actually, one vendor, snack time guy, has what he calls an approval list.
And I bet it's delicious.
I wouldn't go quite that far.
It is. It is. We can do it. We can do it. Fried fruit, nuts, there are all kinds of alternatives. Power bars that are high in protein, low in sugar and low in sodium. We can do it. We just need to be determined to do it.
I just don't want a child leaving campus and getting in an accident because of not wanting what's in the cafeteria and can't get something out of a vending machine.
It doesn't have to be Cheetos. It doesn't.
She said it doesn't have to be Cheetos.
No, it doesn't. They just give them something, give them a choice.
Okay.
So if they don't leave campus to do...
Other questions or comments on the board? I think it's real clear, board is feeling very strongly about this and particularly about the vending machines during lunch. So we want to implore you to look into that and come back to us with suggesting that we can, so we can reactivate the vending machines and that they will in fact be compliant.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the presentation of the Race to the Top Grant. Dr. Ham?
Mr. Chairman, in the last round of Race to the Top Grant applications, only a handful of those applications received grant awards. And we were very fortunate to be part of a consortium of schools that received a Race to the Top Grant. And to present the information about that grant tonight is Dr. Gail Widner, who is the Consortium Director for the grant.
Thank you, Dr. Ham. Hi, Mr. Jackson.
Hi, Gail. How are you? Good to see you.
It's been a while.
It's been a while.
Good evening. It's a pleasure for me to be here to tell you a little bit about the Carolina Consortium for Enterprise Learning. We call it Ccel, so when you hear me say that, that's what it stands for. Where's my remote here? We have four school districts, Clarendon County School District Two, who is our lead district, Orangeburg Consolidated School District Five, which is the city of Orangeburg, Richland Two, and Williamsburg County School District. And Richland Two kindly offered to be the fiscal agent for the consortium, and that's turned out to be a very, very wise decision for us. Who is Ccel? We have eighteen target schools. We run the gamut from PK to twelve, and we did that on purpose so that we would create a continuum of learning for students. We didn't want to transform learning and then put children back into a traditional environment. We also focused on some high schools. Our first choice was looking at high schools, and all of those high schools face particular challenges. Some include limited English proficient students, some have, for example, almost a hundred percent poverty rates. So we have a particular focus. We started with the high schools and worked back. We do however have, I'm very happy to say, some very high-performing schools in the consortium. One of those is Condor, and we have already started learning from Condor in their Learning in Me program we're actually going to use for some of the other elementary schools in the districts. You're probably asking, what is enterprise learning? And it's actually a process. It's not a product. It's not a curriculum. We didn't go out and buy something and we're going to hand it out to everybody and it's going to be the fix-all. It is, enterprise learning is really a process that goes back to how we learn and cognition. It's used in industry and business to identify learning cycles. It's also an engineering process. I was speaking at a Rotary the other day and the engineer in the room was like, oh, yes, this is exactly what we do. So enterprise learning is the capacity to identify a need or a want or a problem, to generate ideas about how to meet this need, to plan the approach and identify and organize useful resources, to implement a plan, to actually assess the plan's outcomes and successfulness, and to reflect and refine the plan as needed. In the United States, enterprise learning is a term used to talk about staff development in business and industry. Deloitte and Tush have a subsidiary named Berson and Associates who actually created an enterprise learning framework. And so they're the gurus of enterprise learning in the United States. They're now following us on Twitter. So they're very involved and very interested in what we're doing. We have four goals in our grant. It focuses from students all the way up to districts about how to simplify processes and get out of our own way to make sure that students are able to take initiative, to challenge themselves, that educators are able to provide that challenge in a personalized learning environment. And that's very difficult to do. We want to make sure our schools are creating and fostering supportive learning environments that are conducive to personalized learning. And that includes scheduling and operations, and that our student, parent, and teacher satisfaction increases across the board. We also have a goal targeting districts. One of the great things about this grant is that we promised to work together for seven years. It's not simply the grant and then it's over with and we all go our separate ways in sharing resources and sharing best practices and doing demonstration lessons. We're using an awful lot of technology to help us get there. We've already started that process in creating demonstration lessons and sharing them across the partnership. We're also building local and statewide partnerships. We already have quite a few. We're always looking for more. And we want to make sure that our students, our teachers, our schools, and our districts are able to embed continuous improvement processes across all areas of operations. For our students and families, one of the best ways to meet our goals is through the one-to-one mobile learning devices. Employability skills today list technology skills as in the top ten. It's no longer enough to know how to turn on a computer and check email. You have to be far more sophisticated than that. A personalized learning plan for every student, project-based learning. This district is already moving far, far ahead with project-based learning. Ccel will help booster that and move those schools further. Personalized learning, access to dual enrollment, AP, virtual learning, and rigorous courses, and making sure that our students across our consortium are completing applications and FAFSA applications. And of course, proficiency-based learning. It's not enough just to do seat time. We really do have to make sure that our students are mastering academic standards. For teachers, we actually have a product called Mastery Connect, which is a web-based instructional cycle facilitator. And it takes a teacher from standards all the way through assessment. So it's actually a web platform. We want to make sure that our teachers are collaborating across the consortium, not just among their school peers, but across the consortium. We want to make sure that we have a range of materials to share with teachers, demonstration videos, mini lessons. If a teacher in King Street is a great physics teacher on a particular standard, we want to make sure that we share that lesson, that we have a video of what is so great about that instructional moment. And we want to make sure that our teachers have the training and support they need in life skills curriculum and in additional curriculums. We'll be using something called overcoming obstacles, which is just beginning to catch on in South Carolina. The entire state of Oklahoma just adopted overcoming obstacles for middle and high schools, and we will be using it for our middle and high schools as well. The Ccel staff for Richland Two, your district director is Kristin C. You have three enterprise learning coaches. Those are assigned to each school. Felicia Richburg Sellers at Condor, Megan McLaren at Dent, and Denise Fowler at Richland Northeast. And your digital resource coaches, that you only have two, so they're shared across the three schools. One of those is Robin McCants and another is Jennifer Rushing. Any questions?
Questions or comments on the board?
I think Kristin, where did Kristin go?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Anderson, and then Mr. Manning?
My question was, how did they decide which district would be the lead district?
That was decided from the very initial meeting because it was Clarendon Two who brought the group together. Clarendon Two contacted SCASA and asked to create a conference call. And so the very first discussion was a conference call, and it was Clarendon Two who put that on the table.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Manning?
Couple of comments. One, Dr. Ham, I applaud you. One of the documents that we have describes the priorities that the board put together, that you put together based off board feedbacks. And thank you, that helps us to see that we're moving in the direction that we want to go as a board. Very helpful to see that. The other, are these whole school initiatives or are they in certain classrooms?
Whole school.
Whole school. And the success criteria, y'all define what that is or how do we determine what the success criteria is?
We have performance measures, which I think are in Kristen's report.
I do have performance measures that are specific for each of the two schools. And if you would like, I can share those. They are in my document. I can work with those to use and they can write these.
Sure. I would like to see those, yeah.
That would be great. You send it to us.
I do have a copy with me. They do focus a lot on, we are obviously here, we're going to have to make some adjustments because where the grounds were in the headings. So...
That's fine. Thank you.
And we also will be refining those performance goals with our evaluators as we go through every year and with the federal government. That's part of the process.
Other questions or comments on the board? Because these schools and these four school districts are on various levels of that spectrum of academic performance, how does, I want to make sure I say this the right way so they can misinterpret it, how does the performance of any one school or any one school district impact the whole, the total?
The performance measures are not aggregate. It's for each school. And we spend an awful lot of time in the planning and in the submission process completing charts, which we actually will end up completing again for each school, each grade level disaggregated data-setting goals, performance goals. And that's so that you are not judged, Richland Two is not judged by Williamsburg's success.
Our success then will be determined based on our baseline data and how far we've moved in it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Growth measures, got it?
Right.
Very good. Other questions or comments on the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a transportation update. Dr. Ham?
Mr. Carter is back up to give you an update on transportation.
Nothing like getting to talk about controversial subjects. I was asked to give you kind of an update over the first three days of school, and so I want to go through some slides. There's a lot of data and a lot of stuff. I'm just going to try to hit some highlights and I'd be glad to answer any questions as we go along. Just as a reminder, the state owns and maintains all of our buses and provides the fuel. In Richland Two, we have seventy-five regular route buses, thirty-nine special needs buses, and twelve buses that are called spares, four of which are regular route and four are special needs. Generally speaking, a spare is a bus that the state has taken off the road as a regular route bus. This gives you a snapshot of the age of our fleet. Eighty-two of our hundred and twenty-six buses exceed the age the state requires for replacement cycle. The original law on replacement cycle was twelve years. They upped it to fifteen years, so eighty-two of our hundred and twenty-six buses are more than fifteen years old. And I will come at the end, I'll talk a little bit about some help that may be on the way. Just to give you a magnitude, let me just start by saying we have over five thousand bus stops in the district. So this just goes hub by hub, and as you already know, nearly every one of our buses runs a middle school route, then an elementary school route, and then a high school route. Some of those buses within those elementary routes will run a double route as well. So for instance, at Rice Creek, because we have some neighborhoods that are close in, we might run doubles out of here. We've run doubles out of Catawba. Basically where you have neighborhood schools and we do pickups, we frequently have to do doubles out of there. So that's the Killian Hub, twenty-eight, forty-eight for stops, because that's the really kind of the G whiz number if you want to think of it that way. Arne Hub has over two thousand stops. Special Needs has almost eleven hundred stops. And we have not started running mid-days or IES runs yet, but that will add to the mileage that our buses go through every day. The first day was a real adventure. We started the day with only four potential spares. We had eight, and I'll get to that in just a second, but just to show you, the Killian Hub had to make thirty-five additional trips to pick up kids that were missed on a route. Some of that was due to some disconnect with InfoSnap and Power School. It's not unusual on the first day for us to have a lot more kids show up for a bus stop than we expect, and if it's overloaded, we have to run that route and go back and get them, so that contributes to that. And so for some reason, the state says it's okay for the first twenty days of school for buses to be overcrowded, but you have to make adjustments in that first hundred and twenty days. When they say make adjustments, they may make adjustments with what you have. They're not going to give you any more. As I said, first day was pretty crazy. The Killian Hub had six kids that had to be taken back to school because they got on the wrong bus or got where they were supposed to go and didn't know their address, or possibly we have a rule that if a kindergartner is on a route, that they have to have an older sibling or an adult meet them at the bus stop or have an older sibling on the bus with them, because we don't want to drop a kindergartner off at a stop with nobody there. Arne Hub had twenty-nine on the first day, seventeen on the second, ten on the third. Those are not the same students necessarily. Special Needs, as you know, Special Needs is a door-to-door service, but if there's nobody there, we have to bring them back. And of course, that's a, that's a burden on a school when we have to bring a student back to the school. But, you know, we think that's for the safety of the students.
Excuse me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good question.
Yes, ma'am.
Whose responsibility after you bring the child back? Is it to get the child? Do you have to make another trip to the home? Or the parents come pick them up?
No, ma'am. Parents come pick them up. Which is, you know, that means unfortunately, somebody at the school may have to wait while a parent can get there. I was asked about missed students. Well, you sort of don't know who you missed if you missed them, but we do know that on Arne Hub reported too, that we just flat missed. I suspect there were others, but we really couldn't tell for sure. I just wanted to show you how early our buses roll. You can see out of the Killian Hub, they start as early as six oh five rolling, and they should be, the last drop of the day on their buses scheduled is five ten. Arne Hub is at five fifty-five with a last drop of four thirty-five, and then Special Needs really rolls early at five forty-three with a five thirty-five completion time, and that's in a perfect day. Again, the first, actually, the first couple of days was a little rough. The first day was really bad in the afternoon, but it really did improve dramatically on day two and day three. It was much better again yesterday, and it continues to improve, although we're still not in a very good condition on spares. But our guys do a good job of taking what they have and making sure the kids get home. One of the, let me just back up here. One of the factors in the, as the maintenance status, one of the factors is on the first day, you've got a bunch of young children getting on a bus for the very first time and getting off of a bus for the very first time. So it automatically takes longer, especially with first graders, kindergartners. And as they get used to it and the parents get used to it, that speeds up. On the very first day, we had eleven buses down. Eight of those were still in the shop. One was wrecked last year and have not been able to repair it yet. We had three engines, one of which happened on the step up the sixth and fresh start day. Then we lost some more that day at transmissions, and we have three that are nineteen eighty-eight year group buses that the state has just said is not worth repairing. Basically, on day two, it got worse. And then on day three, you can see it was about back to where we were on the first day as far as buses that were not available. Now, some of these are down for simple, is turn signal doesn't work, or the four-way flasher doesn't work, or the stop arm doesn't work. Those are fairly easy to fix, and I will give credit to the state. They had mechanics on our sites all three mornings trying to make sure that we did not have buses not available because of turn signal. The state bought a bunch of new buses this year. We think they've been here for a while. They have not issued them to us yet. We think, we've been told that within the next two weeks, we will get up to twenty, and they won't tell us definitively whether it's nineteen or twenty or twenty-one, but they said up to twenty. And that just so happens to coincide with the entire nineteen eighty-eight bus fleet. We had the bus that was down for transmission, we expect back this week. The engine's a different story. We don't really have a good estimate for them and when that's going to happen. And again, state mechanics were out there every morning trying to help. And with that, I will be glad to try to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Manning?
Over the summer, explain to me, Jack, what's the process? When do we start looking at buses to figure out if there's problems and what needs to be addressed?
We drive buses all summer because of summer programs, so we'll look at them every day. We drive buses all summer because of summer programs, so we'll look at them every day.
So you don't really have buses sitting around that you just find out last minute they weren't working?
Yes, sir. I would venture to say every bus is either driven every day or checked in. And so we, Mr. Norton was in contact with the bus shop for a number of days leading up to the first day, pointing out some things that they needed to really get done to help us out on day one. You know, in their defense, the eight buses that were over there, wasn't much they could do about them. We think they pulled two Richland one spares today to give to us to help us out today, which meant Richland one was short spared. But Richland one's got almost twice as many buses with less students. But their bell schedule is different, so.
And Mr. Jackson, did we ask who were bus riders on the forms the parents fill out?
If, we used to do it manually with InfoSnap. It's supposed to be able to register to InfoSnap, supposed to be able to transfer to Power School. And I probably don't have that exactly right. But in Power School, there are three fields. There's one transportation field, and you can opt for morning, afternoon, or both. And we do have a higher ridership in the afternoon than we do in the morning. Typically, a lot of parents will take their child to school in the morning and then ask us to bring them home in the afternoon. So ridership is higher by a fair, fair number in the afternoon. But if it's in Power School, that'll populate the, the route and the bus.
So did we have a technical issue with that transfer between InfoSnap and Power?
We did, and we do, and we're, the, our folks with InfoSnap are working to solve it. They were able to send us stuff manually, and we were able to take the InfoSnap stuff and basically physically load it into, to Power School. But you know, that, that's fraught with opportunity to miss them, so.
So if we had seen the correct numbers, what would we have done different to try to address what we?
We would have probably not had as many as thirty-five routes where we had to go back and pick kids up. We would have tried to make adjustments in routes, so we didn't have a bus show up and all of a sudden have seventy kids to get on the sixty-six passenger bus.
Mr. Chair, I recommend that we, as a board, put together a resolution to our state legislators and others who are key decision makers in this process. You know, first impressions are everything. And when we have our students, that's their first experience coming to our schools every day. And we're putting them at risk. We're making them late to school where they have to come in and catch up. We, we make them feel, I think, different because they have to ride a bus. I remember riding a bus to school. And, and I think that we should, that we should let those folks know that we need the state law to be followed.
Yes, ma'am. We accept that, and you can certainly, I'll ask you to work on that, and you can present that to the board at a future meeting, and we can, the board can decide to support that and move forward if that's which of the board. Thank you very much. Mrs. Sir, Ms. Anderson, and then Dr. Fleming?
I have a couple of questions. There, we're going to get twenty new buses.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to turn in any buses that are?
We have to turn in the twenty that's a one-for-one replace, if they give us twenty. They set up to twenty, and it just so happens that, if I were to go back to the beginning, you see that the nineteen eighty-eight buses are twenty-six years old, there's twenty of them. So at least three of those are sitting in a shop and it's non-reparable. We know that they're going to replace those three. They tell us which buses to turn in. And we do ask, every year, we ask for additional regular route buses. We're our own worst enemy in a way because we do triple route, and we're very efficient as far as ridership is concerned. We also run a large number of what the state refers to as hazardous routes, where we are picking up children within a mile and a half of a school. Some of that is just kind of historical. We've always done it. And I'll, I'll use North Springs as an example. When Clemson Road was just a two-lane road with no sauce sidewalks, we picked up kids very close to the school. We're continuing to do that. So the state is maybe sympathetic, but not empathetic as far as additional buses. Now, they have given us special needs, and they've come out and looked at our routing. And they've told us that we're doing a great job as far as utilizing what we have. They're not very interested in giving us more. And frankly, I don't know if they've got more to give us.
Well, my question would be hypothetically, they're going to take the nineteen eighty-eight buses. Perhaps if we have five of those buses that are in better shape than the nineteen ninety-six buses, we don't have a choice in letting them know which are the better buses that we need to keep and which we need to turn in? They automatically make that statement?
Yes, ma'am. We can certainly ask again, but they've been pretty clear about it's a one-for-one spot now. But we'll ask again. And some of the spares are in that nineteen eighty-eight fleet as well, so.
Yeah, because you know, some, the ninety-sixes could be better than the eighty-eights. My next question was on the special needs. Is it because we have a limited amount of buses, special need buses, that they're picked up so early?
There's a lot of factors that go into that. Because it's door-to-door, sometimes we accommodate parents who have to go to work. You wouldn't be shocked at the number of calls. And so you got to pick my child up by six o'clock because I have to go to work. So we try to accommodate that. We do have some special ed children that spend a long time on the bus. Katina is very aware of that. There's just a lot of factors in special ed. And, excuse me, you got a lot of kids with lifts, that takes longer. So those routes just tend to be a little more challenging.
And do we have adequate staff on those special need buses to assist with loading?
A driver and an aide at least on every one of them.
Because I would think some of them may need two aides. Pardon me?
Some of them have two aides.
Okay. My last question is, is there any overtime costs for those parents who are not home and you have to return those students back to the school?
Do we charge them overtime?
To the, to the school district?
It costs us money, yes, ma'am. Because if you're supposed to be ending your route and you got to go back because there's nobody at home, then.
About what's the longest, do you think, that we, that's, that's, they've had to wait?
I'm sorry, one more time?
About approximately, what is the longest period of time the staff have had to wait for a parent to pick up a child?
At a school?
At a school.
I, I'd have to ask around. I really don't know around the top of my head. I, I would venture to say, well, I know one night, I talked to Beth Elliott, and she had, had somebody for two hours, and it wasn't even a.
Mr. Norton is back there for transportation. Can you?
He wouldn't know the school part.
I'd like to get a report on that, just to see.
Sure, I, I'll send a survey out to the.
And see if there's something that, how we can work with the parents. Maybe they're getting off late from work. There's an underlying cause, and I'd like to, you know, know about that.
And schools that have after-school programs, it's really not an issue. It's, it's like high schools and middle schools, it may not have an afternoon, after-school. Because there will already be somebody there to look after the child.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Fleming?
Question, my question is that you reported that three districts outsourced their bus system.
Yes, sir.
Okay, just, have, have you ever known a district that outsourced their bus system and then went back to the state system?
No, Charleston and Beaufort were the very first two to do it. If you'd have asked them three years after they did it, if they'd do it again, and they'd have told you no. Because the state gives you a certain amount of money to operate. Once you make that transition, they give you a certain amount of money to operate. Once you've divested yourself, all your drivers and supervisors and all those people that used to run your program, and contractors would never do this, but they've got you in a position where they say, we need to renegotiate the contract, and your cost goes up, but your reimbursement does not. I'm actually surprised Dorchester did it a couple of years ago. I mean, every time we talked to Beaufort and Charleston, we actually looked at it maybe ten years ago. It just did not look like a good, good thing to do. And of course, the state has talked about privatizing the entire fleet, which I would be a hundred percent in favor of if they would manage the entire fleet and fund the fleet. But they're going to pass any additional cost along to the districts, and I think that, that's fraught with danger.
That's my, that was my point. I think at some point, we are going to end up in that situation. And it's just like any other program, flooded about half or two-thirds. And everybody else, the funds will have to come from somewhere else. So that's really the only, that was my, we did look at that. I remember us doing that. I mean, that's not, but what our, our fear was, was not, was that they wouldn't give us enough money to operate it this way we're operating now. Can we be less efficient on our three routes per bus and go back, go to two and ask for more buses? Or is that, I know we had the head of the bus guy here one time, and he, he sang our laurels. He sang our praises, and he said, we're ready, keep on going. But every time we get better, they give us less buses.
That was Mr. Tudor. Yeah, he was, he was very happy with what we were doing. But the only way we can do that is to change the bell schedule, and that, I'm not sure that that would cause problems as well, so. We've been doing it for so long now.
And the last question?
Yes, sir.
Twenty buses, if, just say they replaced twenty buses. So we have to give them back twenty buses. Let's say we wanted to keep five buses. They would, that means they wouldn't service those five buses if we kept five buses, if we kept five buses for spares. Is that what that means?
If they let us keep them, they would still service them.
They would still service them?
Because they would be still, still part of their fleet.
Well, they're not going to turn around and give them to somebody else, are they? Or they're just going to take them out of service?
I, I suspect they will completely take them out of service. They may, they may held as spares.
Right.
The army, we called them hangar queens, because you'd put them in a hangar somewhere, and you'd strip all the parts off of them, and there was nothing left of them.
Well, I think, you know, we need to fight for maybe five more buses somehow. Even, even if they, I know it's difficult because we've had, we've had those conversations. Thank you, Jack.
Other questions, comments on the board? Thank you very much, Jack.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Anderson?
I agree with Dr. Fleming. I think we need to fight for that, even if the letter needs to come from you as chair of the board, requesting that we keep five of those buses, because we're growing twenty, over twenty-seven thousand students. I think we need to at least try our best to be heard and let our needs be known.
I would agree, Ms. Anderson. As a matter of fact, I, I didn't want to go further with it because it would have been a lengthy discussion. But one of the things I made a note of is that with the new subdivisions that have been built since last year, we've got an increased number of students riding buses now that we're not riding, we're not even living in the district this time last year. And so, but no adjustment in the number of buses. So I totally agree with what you're saying and Dr. Fleming's saying as well. And certainly will ask the staff to compose a letter to that effect.
Thank you very much. Next on our agenda will be the agenda items for the September ninth board meeting, which will be held back at Polo Road Elementary School. Dr. Ham?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. We'll have a faculty focus, a report on the summer professional development that we had for classified staff, an update on the data snapshot, a report on our look at magnet schools and recommendations for phase one, an update on the long-range facility study, a back-to-school report, and an update and recommendations regarding Bridge View.
Thank you very much. Are there any other items the board would like to add to the next board meeting agenda or a future board meeting agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I would like to add something. Earlier tonight, we were talking about, we do not have a policy in place for giving Dr. Ham and Dr. Malley permission to approve budget items. I would like to see something written in policy as to how much they would have permission to grant on behalf of the board, because I was a little disappointed to see that they approved a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars of budget money without notifying the school board. So I'd like to see something written in policy concerning how much, if any, that we would give them the ability to do.
So I'll direct staff to look into developing a policy that would speak to the superintendent and staff's discretionary authority with regards to altering or changing categories of funding in the budget. Would that be referenced?
Yes, that would be great. Thank you.
But I think it needs to be, Mr. Chair?
Ms. Anderson?
I need, I think you need to clarify that.
Certainly.
In cases of emergency, because I think it was an emergency situation due to the sheriff department increasing the cost of the SROs that we had already approved. So I'm not sure if we want to get into writing policies for something like that, because you would have to be very specific. And there are things that come up. We cannot always know what to write every policy on. So I think we need to be careful when you write a policy on what they can approve, because there will be certain emergencies, such as this with the S R O, S R O officers, that would have to be approved. So I just want to remind the board, policies are good, but you have to be careful in how you write policies.
And Mr. Chair, let me make a comment with that.
Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Since Ms. Anderson brought that up, we had two weeks to be notified. So anytime anything is an emergency, it's our responsibility as a board to make that decision.
Okay, I think I'm clear, and I think that.
Okay.
Well, no, I'm saying, I think we're clear on what the request is and, and the response to it. And I still stand by asking the staff to develop a draft document to present to the board that would take into consideration emergencies and exceptions to that based upon the request.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Anderson. Thank you very much, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any other items that the board would like to consider adding to the next board meeting or an upcoming board meeting?
Mr. Chair?
Dr. Fleming?
This is just mainly information. And based on the information I received.
Yes, sir.
Whether I request it to be on the agenda.
Yes, sir.
I, I want to know the information that we require for, from parents or guardians for a student to enroll in Richland two. All the, all the information we require.
Mr. Chair?
I'll take, I'll take that as a, as an email to start with.
Absolutely. Dr. Fleming, so you'll accept the response in an email form rather than put it on the agenda for initial start? Thank you very much. Mr. Manning?
I would like us to look at how we put together the agenda and future agendas, the goals that the board has, and the one report they did a great job of outlining, what those goals were that were being met by that initiative. I'd like for us to incorporate those goals into the agenda so that we can see that items that come up, where do they align with what the board wants so that we can kind of make sure we're moving in a forward direction? And then also, I know at the last board meeting, we looked at some data. We have more data coming up. And I wanted specifically to kind of come back with some follow-up items out of that data on where we're addressing weaknesses. And so I'd like to make sure that we get those items on the agenda to continue to follow up with specific data points and where we need to, to strengthen ourselves.
And I think the next board meeting, the data snapshot update would be an appropriate place to have not only the presentation of the data, but also a plan, a suggested plan of things that are going to be done to address those areas where there are deficiencies that have been identified in the data. Is that what I hear you saying, Mr. Manning?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. Other, other suggestions or recommendations? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the public participation, part two. Again, we had no one to sign up. However, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, feel free to do so at this time. Please come forward, sir, if you will, and state your name and share with us. You are aware that we don't typically respond to you as a board, but we certainly will hear, and if the response is required, we'll get one to you. You'll have three minutes, sir.
Definitely appreciate it. My name is Benjamin Washington, teacher at E. Wright Middle School. First and foremost, want to thank all our colleagues here on the board, executive staff, and all the members of the district for everything you do. I've had a great experience here so far. I appreciate everything what you do. But getting straight to the issue, I'm at E. Wright, and our school is, as you know, newly confirmed IB school. And I'm just here to say that so far, we are seeing, we're seeing good changes with that. They're slow, but we are seeing growth. We had a gentleman come here, this is in the audience, so we had a gentleman come here and show us some of our test score data and some other data about student achievement and how they feel about the whole process of school. And it is working well. My principal does not know I'm here, but I'm speaking on her behalf also as well. My point being is, since we are an IB school and we have a global perspective, I know we have different things in the district, such as technology initiatives and, you know, the new site we're building in San Hills. But are there any other programs or initiatives that we will be doing to bring in more of the global design? Because I think that would definitely help not just our school out, but the district as a whole. That's the only question.
Again, we don't respond in public participation, but we certainly, someone is making notes of that for us now, and we'll get a response to you, though.
Definitely. I mean, whenever time is available, you know, I just want to make sure that it is known that using that global perspective, in addition to the other things we already do, will help out tremendously with our school district.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have a good one.
At this time, next on our agenda is board and superintendent comments. We'll start to my left, Dr. Elkins Johnson?
No comments, thank you.
Next, Mrs. Brill?
Sean, just want to thank you for your hospitality. It's great to be at Rice Creek, and you're doing an excellent job with your children. I like their recitation of good behavior habits. That's very important. They were adorable. Outstanding opening of school. Went around with Dr. Ham and James and our chair for, for half of the opening day. And saw happy children, happy teachers, faculty, and saw a lot of administrators coming and going out of different schools. So that was really impressive. You really feel the administration is working with the schools and the principals and the staff and that is very reassuring and it just shows that we're doing what we should be doing. So that was very encouraging. I do want to reiterate my interest in healthy snacks and the vending machines. It is possible, I know it is, and we just need to start thinking that way. It's not hard, it's just different. Also, outstanding work by our communications staff, the back-to-school handbook, and this calendar at a glance is outstanding work, so thank you all. So there is no way that you would have any questions about Richland Two, it's all right here. So thank, thank you, thank you all, Dr. Mally. So it's, it's very helpful to have everything at your fingertips and thank you, Mr. Chair, for a good meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Brill. Mr. Manning?
I just want to thank the staff. Enjoyed my first day walking around at the school, spent the whole day doing that and heard nothing but positive comments from staff and parents and others about the start of school. First impressions are important, so thank you for everybody that worked hard to do that. I want to make sure that, that we do continue to look at the data and not just applaud initiatives for what they seem like they do for us, but actually look at how they're helping us. So we have the seven habits. As we implement that, look at what is that doing for student discipline, students spending, you know, on, on, students being on task, those sorts of things so that we can see that the many initiatives that we have in the district where they're having an impact and which populations that they may be having the best impact with, so that we can continue as, I think Cecil Grant talked about individualized education, looking at every student and making sure that we're getting to every student. Thank you guys for what you do. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Dr. Fleming?
Sean, I'm always glad to be here. Visited you several times and it's always been good to see your students live, you know, live by these seven traits. We got a book tonight, Multipliers, and I see that the foreword was written by Stephen Colby, so the guy who initiated those seven traits, I look forward to looking through and reading this book. I believe we talked about this one last time.
We did.
Thank you, thank you. And also, I just, the children that performed tonight, I mean, they had no fear, they were confident and I just enjoy, enjoy seeing these kids do what they do best and that's communicating with us and I really enjoyed the program. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Mrs. Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I share the same comments that my fellow colleagues have stated. Also, I would like to congratulate Chief Perry Langston, Vietnam veteran who's over Spring Valley's ROTC, receiving the award from Senator Tim Scott and they opened up, excuse me, ROTC drill team, opened up for over three thousand veterans for the Vietnam War era ceremony. So I just wanted to say that they're still doing it well at Spring Valley with their drill team. Keep up the good work. Looks like everyone is set and ready to go for another wonderful school year and I wish us all the best and let's keep Barbara Spektor, who as our chairman announced earlier this, this evening, had surgery and we pray that she will do well and we will continue to keep Fred McDaniel and his family in prayer as they journey to their new home in Oregon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Hamm?
I want to echo some of the sentiments that you've heard. The school year absolutely got off to a great start and I want to thank our principals, our teachers, our staff for making sure that we welcome students back with open arms and that we were ready to hit the ground running with teaching and learning. Learning is definitely underway in Richland Two and I want to compliment the staff and principal here at Rice Creek. I think evidence of that, that after only five days of school, their children could get up and do what they did, tells you that they hit the ground running at this school. We've gotten feedback about our newest school, like Carolina Upper, and that, that went well. It's been very well received by the families. I talked to parents who were very happy with the fact that kids could still walk and ride to school. With the sidewalks and things that we've added, that's made a big difference for that school. I was fortunate to be at Ridgeview High School and see the first of their twentieth birthday celebrations as the band played Happy Birthday down the hall and they plan to have some event celebrating that twentieth anniversary on the twentieth of every month for the remaining of the school year, which is a fun thing to do. That'll culminate in May with a gala for their alumna. And then finally, Richard, Richland Northeast will have a first next week, which is their first home football game ever and everyone's invited to come out on Friday, September the fifth for that football game. The Cavaliers are going to take on Lancaster and my understanding is that may have been one of the first games that they play too, which is a nice little thing there. Last but not least, I want to say thank you to Sudexo, that backpack program makes the children have food to eat and they don't go hungry over the weekend. So they touched a lot of lives that way and I'm very grateful.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. I certainly want to echo again what board members have said and I had the privilege of being able to visit schools on the first day with Ms. Brill, Ms. Manning and Dr. Hamm and then had the opportunity to be able to visit some schools on the second day with just Dr. Hamm. And it was amazing that students were already on task and working and excited and enthusiastic about being back in school and teachers seemed to be that way as well. I'm sure they were exhausted after that day, but they certainly did good the first two days of school. Had opportunity on Sunday to visit Ridgeview High School, they were holding Sunday afternoon their cuts for Gabby. So proud of what Ridgeview is doing under Dr. Mack's leadership, taking a tragedy in the loss of one of our dear students, Gabby Swingson, and turning it into such a noble cause where they had, the community to come out on Sunday and get haircuts and all the funds proceeds from those haircuts are going to go into scholarships for students, a student, a senior, as well as scholarships for those students who are enrolling in their master haircuttery program who may have difficulty buying some of the materials and supplies to enroll in that. And so I'm very proud, I was very proud to, to be there and wanted to get my head, I mean my hair cut, but didn't have enough for them to do, so they let me off the hood. Thank you all for being here tonight. It's certainly a pleasure to, to have you and thank you board members for an outstanding meeting. Any other issues that come before the board? Hearing none, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn?
Salute.[1791.12]